Thank you, Thor. Just give me the thumbs up when we're rolling. All right, welcome everybody to this work session of the Tiger Walton School Board. I will call the work session to order at 5:03 PM on October 18. In this work session, the topic of our discussion will be baseline assessment data and school and district dashboards update. Dr. Ricky Smith will be presenting with an assist from Paul Verstraet. So with that, I will hand it over to Dr. Ricky Smith.
Thank you so much, Chair. This evening, Patty, do you have the slide deck up, please? No worries. Thank you, and if you please advance it to the next slide, please. So this evening, we start again by reaffirming the overarching goal for achievement that we have set for this district, which is 5% growth overall for all students and 8% are historically underserved. The measures for kindergarten through eighth grade will be eye-ready math and literacy data. The measures will be for high school ninth through 12th grade, ninth grade on track, credit attainment, and graduation. Next slide, please, Patty. The report this evening is a baseline relative to two of the five standards by which the board will evaluate my performance. The first being the superintendent as a visionary educational leader, that is standard one, and you see the standard listed here. Next slide, please, Patty. The second is standard five, which speaks directly to the superintendent as an instructional leader of the district. And you see the bullet points below there. Next slide, please. Paul, I'll ask you to take these slides and walk us through the data. I've always also asked Director Todd Robson of Teaching and Learning to talk a little bit this evening as well about plans for how we will support both administrators and teachers in using the tools necessary to address the data in front of us. So without further ado, Paul.
How about now? All right. So the data that I'm going to be walking through is going to start with our reading comprehension data. The very first slide behind me, yep, so we are on that one, shows the three different assessments that we give for reading comprehension from kindergarten through eighth grade, Acadients, Eye-Ready, and then the Maze Assessment. This slide is showing the overall participation rate we had for each of these assessments, as well as a total participation rate. The total students tested column is if they tested in at least one of those three assessments. So that's, they may have only done Acadients or Eye-Ready or Maze, but not the two that each grade level has. You will notice that kindergarten is currently at the lowest right now because that assessment in Eye-Ready is currently in process. And so that will be updated in the next couple of weeks as we get that data in. Next slide. Just a couple of brief points about the reading comprehension data. First of all, we are showing a drop. Our Acadients and Maze are only longitudinal measures at this moment, from pre-pandemic to currently this year. And we are seeing a drop in those scores pre-pandemic as compared to this year, which you will see on Exhibit One, Pages seven and eight of the report that Dr. Sue submitted. This drop for students on grade level is seen across the board for both our general population, as well as our underserved students. However, the drop for underserved is deeper. We do have a greater percentage drop in our underserved students. And then, we have a unique opportunity at this moment with two different assessments for reading comprehension to be able to see the difference between the two. To see the difference between the two, the Acadients assessment measures mostly foundational reading skills, while the Eye-Ready assessment is on grade level reading standards. And so being able to compare scores on the two, for example, if you scored higher on the Eye-Ready and lower on Acadients, then you may have a very shallow understanding of the standards, which you need to beef up with more foundational reading skills that'll help you out. So comparing the two is something that our reading toasts are going to be working on this. And then finally, just as a note, the Eye Station indicators of progress is a Spanish literacy assessment that we are implementing for our two-way immersion program at Bridgeport and Metzger. And we are currently in the process of getting that report, and you should have an update on it in December. So that's the reading comprehension for Spanish in our TWE program. Next slide. With mathematics, Eye-Ready is our primary assessment for mathematics. As you can see, again, in kindergarten, we are currently in process of doing the assessment for kindergarten. And that's based on a recommendation from Eye-Ready that we wait a couple of weeks into the year, getting kindergartners into the building acclimated before giving them, I think it's about an hour-long assessment, which they break up into different sessions, don't get me wrong. We don't sit there for an hour and make them take a test. Next slide. So when I was presenting this last year to the board, we saw throughout the year of giving the Eye-Ready assessment that math was consistently lower than our reading comprehension scores. That is staying consistent here in the fall as well, that our math scores are, the percentage of students that are scoring on grade level for math is lower than the percentage for reading comprehension. That is staying the same as compared to last year as well. And some of the reasons that we see for this might be that parent ease with supporting students in reading comprehension during the pandemic was it was easier for them to support reading versus some of the math skills. As well as we do have a very robust reading comprehension intervention program here in the district. So I would credit that for keeping our reading scores from falling further behind. The last thing I want to note about this is the same for all of the data points that is in the reports, that we have several categories of underserved. And for example, students that are economically disadvantaged, students that are underserved, students of color, English language learning students, that these categories are outlined by ODE as what they consider combined disadvantage, which means if you have any one of those, then statistically, you have a less likelihood of scoring on grade level on our statewide assessments. And we see the same here. However, if you have more than one of those categories, then we also saw a progressive drop in the percentage of students that are scoring on grade level. So for example, if you are both economically disadvantaged and an underserved student of color, or if you are both, let's say, homeless and foster care or things like this, if you start stacking these categories, then the percentage likelihood of scoring on grade level or attending regularly, the system just isn't as robust in supporting students as those number of categories. Next slide.
All right, so I want to just share a support plan for this year, specific to Eye-Ready, and bringing this tool to life and really making sure that our teachers and our administrators are fully supported in utilizing this resource. So in August, we had a diagnosing and planning for unfinished learning opportunity. We brought all of our teachers together for that particular training. And that was one way to really incorporate Eye-Ready, the enhancements, the resources, bringing those to the table and really motivating students for successful diagnostic administration, which is part of the process. And then all of our teachers coming up, just around the corner, will have another opportunity to really analyze data coming off of the diagnostic, analyze the data to determine targeted small group instruction to support grade level learning specifically, and then monitor and manage the personalized instruction to maximize their performance. So through that My Path resource. So that'll be, and you can see there, one of the things that we're doing in terms of the model is in these challenging times with substitutes being an issue and trainers coming to us on campus being an issue. One of the things that we've done is we've offered up virtual opportunities and given multiple opportunities to teachers to be able to attend. And so far, that's been successful because folks have, they're not stuck to a particular calendar date. And so they have different options to make sure they get what they need. And then, in terms of all of our schools, we'll have, in February, March, we'll bring folks back. We have something called Tailored Support, and that's working with our building leaders. That tailored support will look different based on what school, individual schools need. And we'll be really understanding and responding to the student growth that we see, the student data that we see. And we'll look at small group differentiation, for example. And then also engage, this is a part of Eye-Ready that's been something we're really pushing, is engaging students in goal-setting through data chats. So bringing our students to the table around their data and their own goals, specific to that data. In terms of administrators, all of our leaders on October 6th engaged in an opportunity, a data-driven leadership best practices training. And that was really gave, it gave our administrators a hands-on experience in terms of exploring really the most important reports that are connected to Eye-Ready. So as they really dive into their own schools' data, they had the ability to understand what kind of reports really gave them the pictures they needed to see and understand the story that was being told. And then we have another opportunity for all leaders in February, where we'll have after the second diagnostic, in January, we'll bring all of our building leaders together and examine the winter diagnostic results, look at the growth that we see, and really then start to determine the course of action in terms of goals for their schools that way. And that leads to then that support with teachers, as we talked about that tailored support opportunity. And then, lastly, you know, we are, one of our efforts is to provide just-in-time, as we're calling them newsletters, that provide, there's a multitude of supports through Eye-Ready that we want to connect our teachers to, and just-in-time meeting before and then after the diagnostics, for each of our three diagnostics, giving teachers, drawing them into different resources that connect families to the diagnostic, allow them to speak to kids again through their goals and the things that they're shooting for, really set kids up for success in terms of that experience. And then, meeting with individual teachers' teams is something that my team does regularly throughout, and then also emailed support where it's a nice flow of communication back and forth via email that way. So with questions and support that way. Next slide.
I have a question, Director Robson. So one of the concerns that I've heard from teachers in general, and I can't remember which of the specific three, was, you know, obviously, we know this isn't a high-stakes test, but sometimes students might feel pressure or anxiety, in particular, younger students, when approached with something like this. So can you walk us through the, if I'm in a classroom and I'm watching students take this test, how is it introduced to them? What can we do to accommodate for those concerns?
Well, good question, and that was one of our concerns, too, is to help teachers, one of the supports is to help teachers tie into the letters, not only to parents. It sets the stage in terms of language around this kind of diagnostic. But then, what does that mean? There really are strategies as an educator that you use to set your kids up for success and to actually, you know, attaching them to goals, helping them understand what the diagnostic is. So actually having those conversations and creating a culture in your classroom that really is about giving your best effort and understanding the why behind this. And when it's connected to, and having our teachers understand when they're telling the kids what this is connected to in terms of helping them fully understand what their needs are, where they are in their learning, so they can meet them where they're at. When you bring it to that level, that conversation with the student, that's where we want all of our teachers to be, and that's part of the resource and the learning that we're supporting our teachers with this year.
All right, next slide. The next data point that we want to go over is the office discipline referrals. So discipline referrals, as we noted last year, were way down as compared to pre-pandemic, which is not surprising considering that it was comprehensive distance learning. And so the space for students to receive referrals was dramatically closed. So for example, referrals tended to be, you know, virtual or, you know, some sort of disruption during a virtual classroom. This year, we do have an increase from last year, but not near on the levels that we saw pre-COVID. This, I do want to point out that this could be due to a lag in reporting. It is quite possible for a student to be referred to the office one day, the documents to be, sit on a desk and not be put into the system for a week. And if that is the case, then I will make sure to provide an update to the board if I do see any sort of dramatic increases, I rerun the numbers. And one last thing to note when you are looking at the data is that elementary school does, it does show that it has higher referrals, but that is not because of an increase in behavior issues, but an increase in tracking. That the elementary school tracks minor behaviors much more closely than the middle and high schools do. And so what you see in those numbers is minor disruptions or insubordination or all those other terms about causing minor disruptions during class. So just as you're looking at the data, know that about the elementary versus the secondary. Next slide. One other piece of data that we are currently in the process of collecting is a social-emotional survey. We are currently piloting this at the moment. This being the first time that we have implemented this survey, the data is going to be baseline. And so we can't say if we have students that are responding in a certain way that this is above or below what we expected, because this is the first time we are giving this survey. We do expect there to be some higher notes of, for example, maybe feeling a little less safe than they normally would because of COVID. And so just as this being a baseline survey, knowing that that's going to be in the data as well. The survey is designed for third through 12th grade, so it is district-wide, third through 12th grade. And questions on the survey include their experience in class, their experience with fellow students, other teachers, and it's around safety, kindness of adults and fellow students, and their overall learning experience. And we will probably, we'll be able to provide a report on this to the board in December.
Will there be any questions on that survey that might tie into surveys we have done in the past, like Healthy Teens or any of those that we can sort of extrapolate a little bit of information from?
Oh. So like the Oregon Health Authority's student health service, sorry. There are similar questions, but they are not like one-to-one questions. So it would be not a close comparison to be able to show those two. And the Oregon Health Authority survey is only sixth, eighth, and 11th grade, where we're doing ours third through 12. All right. Next slide. I do want to, there is a brief update about the At-A-Glance reports that you all received a report on that, just as a reminder, the only new data, sorry, OD released this, the At-A-Glance, several weeks ago. Just as a brief report, the only new data on these At-A-Glance reports are around attendance, ninth grade on track, and the statewide assessments. All graduation data on those At-A-Glance reports are from the previous year. And we provided an in-depth report on the previous year's graduation back in January, which I think we shared, which anyone can see those reports and see the minutes and the video. One brief update about the attendance and statewide assessments is that the data from this year, from the At-A-Glance and last year, is very different than any data that we have collected in the past. The definition of attendance was different last year than it was in the past, including the alternative present for students that engaged during asynchronous time. And the statewide assessments, as you know, we only had a 4% participation rate, whereas normally, we have a 96% participation rate. For the most part, that's due to the way in which we gave out the assessment. We wanted to make sure that parents had the option to be able to have their students take the assessment to learn about their students on an individual basis. The data itself is not intended for any trend outside of individual students. And then, the ninth grade on track data would be the only new data we have as compared to previous reports that we've given the board. And the data from ninth grade on track does show that GTSD is ahead of the statewide average for ninth graders on track. And then finally, my understanding is Director Amber Fields is going to be providing a more detailed report on this on November 22nd. Next slide. With that, we have our, the district dashboard that we are going to be putting out. The dashboard on the website itself is going to look very similar to the COVID dashboard in that on the website itself, there'll be a very quick piece of information, for example, percent of students that are attending regularly will actually be on the website. And then that will become a link where you'll get to the more detailed information if you want to. And this, the slide has an example of the type of report that would be the more detailed reports, which would include attendance, our Acadients assessments, and our Eye-Ready assessments for grades K through eight. And then, a late addition to the slides, if we go to the next one. We do also have the beginnings of what our high school report is going to look like. High school being very different than K through eight. There were, as Dr. Sue had said, that report is going to be focused on credit attainment, the ninth grade on track, and graduation. And so that report is necessarily going to need to wait until semester one, when we have our first credits assigned, because our high schools are on a semester system. And so we'll be able to provide that updated report for the high schools at the close of the first semester. But just an idea that that's the type of thing you'll see on the high school report, which is attendance, credit attainment, and then course performance at the end of semester one. And I believe that gets me to the end of the slides.
Vice Chair Lynn. Thank you very much for this informative report. And it's clear that the pandemic has impacted, you know, student test-taking behaviors as well as our ability to be able to gather the data. And so I think you've done a great job in terms of pulling together what you have to tell a story about what's going on. I just had a couple of questions, and they were with respect to something that came up earlier. Oh, you talked about the difference between math and reading scores and that parent ease, you know, as I'm a parent, being related to sort of better reading scores. And I just wanted to, you know, kind of ask a question about that. I guess the question I had was how you.
How do I, the two data points, the two hypotheses about why that is, is the parent ease at providing support as well as our robust intervention. At this point, there are hypotheses as to why. Which part of the survey process, we are, there might be a survey to parents to try and understand that more fully. But at this point, it is more of a hypothesis than we know for sure that that's why.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for that. Because I do think it's important, you know, as we talk about parents or if there's any way in which we assign responsibility or whatever to parents and we have, you know, data to back that up. So I appreciate your thought about maybe some kind of survey to support that.
Vice Chair, I would also offer that Historians District, it is just recently that we adopted Eye-Ready because it was clearly aligned to the Common Core, now Oregon State standards, where previously, students did not have that curriculum. And so what we're also seeing is a shift. Many of those standards that typically would have been taught further upline, older, when students were older, has been downshifted. And so we're also going through a period of time where teachers are getting their head wrapped around what they have to teach at this particular grade level. So there will be some gaps along the way. This is the second district I've been in where we've made that shift from the old Oregon standards to the new standards with curriculum that matches. And one of the reasons why Eye-Ready has been, what was selected is because of these formative assessments that help us understand those shifts, number one, and number two, give the teacher tools to guide them through it while they're trying to get their head wrapped around. I now teach this at fourth grade when it used to be taught at sixth. And it has more to do with where the state leveled those standards versus our teachers' expertise. So they're retooling at the same time to align their instruction to the new standards.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, that's helpful. Any other thing is more of an ODE thing, and I just thought I'd voice it. And it's not anything that anybody here can do anything about, but this, the sort of, the use of the term underserved. I think there was a point in our history where the term underserved was preferred to at-risk, right? And we, you know, in the seventies and eighties, we called, you know, nineties, we said these kids were at risk, at risk of failure. And those at-risk categories are similar to the kind of underserved categories. And then, you know, we talk about two or more of those categories and how we think about them in relation to achievement. And so I guess, you know, my comment, and again, this is not directed at you, this is really just a general statement, in terms of thinking about how we can understand student difference and how that relates to outcomes without sort of, I don't know, you know, pigeonholing them, I guess. And I guess, I guess I feel like this notion of underserved, and then the idea of the compounding underserved, if you're more than one category, you know, is just a challenging one. And I think when you think about testing in general, it probably leads to, you know, some self-fulfilling prophecies, right? That I think we want to avoid, but that's just a comment that is not related to Go-Work, it's just in general.
Yeah, Director Irvin.
And so, Vice Chair Lynn, I agree in terms of just sort of the history of testing and the problematic sort of parts of it. And I also think that to Dr. Sue's point, the Eye-Ready is helpful when we can just looks, you know, that student-by-student, you know, as you would say, Dr. Sue, granular data, which is really helpful, and also telling a bigger story. So there's context with those numbers, which I think is sort of combining those two. What is the context of the numbers and not just sort of a label on the kid and how they did on the test? And so I think that's sort of maybe where some of the burden of responsibility falls on us, is to kind of find that balance of the whole child and how they're learning, and then also sort of overlaying that, how they test, because those can all be very different and all be very nuanced, which makes testing and assessing so difficult, I think, at times. And then the other thing I wanted to ask more on, if I put on my parent hat, which is, you know, looking at some of the numbers now that they've sort of dropped, and I think we all knew that was going to happen because, because the world. Moving forward is our first sort of goal. I appreciate that, I think we always just want to see growth, whatever that growth looks like, is our sort of bigger goal, to start as quickly getting back to where we were pre. Like, so we're not looking farther ahead than where we were in 1920. We're really trying to figure out the best ways to get where we were before everything sort of shut down and then continue to move forward, correct? That's kind of what our strategy is.
Best of all possible worlds would be that we, you know, Possible worlds would be that we, you know, could get us ourselves close to where we were, you know, early, pre-pandemic. You know, and then the five to eight percent beyond that, that would be the ultimate. But I think you are wise in, in your statement, Director, in the sense that that may be the growth this year is just to get us back to, to level um, and then continue to push beyond that. What's most important for myself and, and for um, my obligation to the community is that there is growth and that we are, not only we're recovering, but we aren't stopping at that recovery that we continue to push forward. If, if there is time in the year to do that, and that's what these tools are meant to do. It is to address where the gap is and, but then continue to address students' rate and level of learning and to not simply stop by saying, well, good, I got you to, I, I got you to, to grade level and my work is done. No, we continue to push and, and encourage the student to move forward.
So I will do a quick time check. It is five thirty-four and we have one more item for the work session. So are there any other questions or comments for our two presenters? Vice Chair Lynn.
So I, I guess I'm just have a, and this is a more philosophical question just around testing and how we think about testing and, you know, and I heard some indication of, of this sort of move toward really looking at the student as an individual and comparing this to him or herself, right? Which, uh, which is the kind of testing, you know, I, I hope we're going to be focusing on and moving toward. And so how do we think about that really as, you know, students? How, how do we create a system where students are really focused on improvement, improvement for the sake of getting better and not as compared to some sort of norm that may or may not be real?
And, and Vice Chair, you know, Chair Bowman and, and Director Research Media have heard me say repeatedly, I, I really don't give two cents for the, for the state summative assessment. That is meant to inform us as a district and should inform state policy, should never be used relative to informing instruction. Because it is a summative assessment, it's like an autopsy. What, what these tests are meant to do, these assessments are meant to do is exactly that, is to help the student see, this is where you are. This is where I know you can be, um, and this is, this is your goal. And one of the things that I have appreciated, Jill Kriske, who is now, who was seventh grade teacher here last year, is now a math coach. Did a beautiful job in the spring talking about this data by saying, I conference with every single one of my students. And I say, show them where they are and what their growth goal is. And of the conversation that we have is that when you meet that goal, how would you like to celebrate? Not if you meet that goal, but when you meet that goal. And so she set those targets and as a student met each goal and celebrated, they build that, that also that sense of resiliency and confidence in their skills, because most children will look right at you and say, I go, I'm not very good at math. Um, and it's simply because we, as a culture, tend to have a math phobia rather than it's okay to learn, to fail, to address where, where the, where the gaps are and then to move forward. And that's what this is meant to be. The reason you have formative, as you well know, formative and interim data is to the, inform the instruction and to work directly with the student, not against some preconceived notion. Now, we do know, as you well know, that there are certain norms that we want students to hit relative to where they should be in terms of their growth and development at each grade level. But again, some students will get there in a year, some will get there in a year of plus, others will get there well ahead of a year of worth of instruction. Again, it's meant to tailor to that personal needed student.
And I, and I would just add that one of the things that we're focusing on too is intentionally looking at our practice service, the, the outcomes aren't just about, hey, how did you do as an individual? But teachers really, we're really working out teachers to reflect on their practice based on what they're saying from their students. So that's driving a lot of, we'll talk about support and how we're bringing our teachers to the table around assessment literacy. It's that piece that is about, what does this tell me about my practice? Um, the only question I wanted to ask, and we didn't, we probably don't have time to dive into it now, but um, for a follow-up potentially is, and maybe Dr. Sue, this is our quest for you, if we can get a better sense of how does our early data match up to the equivalent tests, the testing that's taking place in neighboring districts relative to where our students are? I know it'll be a different, it'll be different, but just to gauge where we're at.
I, I think we can certainly get a statewide look at those that have adopted i-ready and, and get a sense of that. We can also get national data, and this is where, again, we are following the national trends that i-ready has, has pulled relative to uh, reading versus math performance. But if a district is not using this particular, um, it would be comparing apples to oranges potentially. Your only measure at that point then is to see how you stack up relative to S VAC. Because that, that would be a common measure that, that all have participated in.
I think the state and national data would be a great, a great benchmark just for us to.
We can certainly, we can certainly provide that as well.
So with that, um, we're, we're going to be on a bit of a time crunch, but I see we have Director Moore via Zoom and Director Ebert is here with us in person. So, um, thank you both for presenting uh, in this work session. And we'll move on to item B of the work session, which is an enrollment update and budget update with Directors Ebert and Moore. Can we test your sound, Director Moore, and see if we can hear you?
Testing.
Perfect, we got you.
Test. All right. Well, good evening, everyone. All right. Well, this evening, uh, my trusty partner is, is with me virtually. We are here to present our final set of data around enrollment. This is the time of year that uh, we give our final enrollment report to the board. Although you will still uh, receive enrollment reports in the board updates from time to time. Uh, this will be our final presentation here at the, at the work session. And we allowed a little extra time as we have, uh, for the work session this evening, as we have multiple documents to take a look at. So that you have the enrollment report, the summary um, that we have, let's get this down to fifty percent so I can see it. The enrollment summary for twenty-one, twenty-two, make sure you're on the tab for ten, twelve, twenty-one at the bottom. Or Patty may put a PDF in here for you so that that's not an issue. Um, so our district total for enrollment uh, stands right now at eleven thousand five hundred eighteen as of last week, which was up approximately a hundred students from ten-one. And then remember that that excludes our preschoolers and it also takes out our um, charter. And we have um, also made sure that the virtual academy piece is um, in here correctly with the correct algorithm um, as well. So these are completely accurate numbers across the board. Any questions about the summary? Okay, so the second document I'd like to um, bring your attention to is then the class size. So um, we have both the secondary class size and we have PDFs of the most recent elementary class size. So we'll start with the secondary class sizes. And the tabs across the bottom break down each school and you can see the um, size of each class in language arts, math and so forth. And then it also gives you an average for the class size. And then it goes into science, social studies, performing arts, visual arts, foreign language, e-health, and lots of more electives as you go on down. So it's quite, quite lengthy to look at the high school ones. But I think what's important to point out is throughout K-12, our K-12 system is just the class size right now and how um, small overall, um, our class sizes are, and that was intentional. Um, remember as we were um, looking at not only space, but predicting what we would be looking at in terms of learning loss. Um, a commitment to smaller class sizes was really important to us as we started to staff for the school year.
Can I just say, um, in my fourteen, fifteen years on the board, I have never seen class sizes this low at the high school level. And as somebody who used to teach um, creative writing classes, I love that the language arts classes are less than twenty-five for the most part. And that's, that makes such a difference to our teachers, makes such a difference to the ability of writing teachers to be able to teach. And it's, it's a, it's a wonderful, spectacular side effect of the pandemic. And it's like, it's that silver lining, I just wanted to call it out. It's, it's really impressive, these class sizes.
Yeah, they are. And then the other document that I wanted to point out this evening was, um, you have a folder of the PDFs of the most recent elementary staffing. And as well, um, across the board, we have a couple pockets of larger class sizes. Where we were able to accommodate space-wise as well. But we really just have a couple um, classrooms um, that were on the larger side. For the most part, we are um, in the teens for K and one or low twenties across the board. We've got a couple of fourth and fifth grades that are toward the top of the range, but literally just a couple. So these are optimal class sizes um, for not only pandemic um, teaching, but also just um, coming back into full day, all kids in school, um, and, you know, getting back into a regular routine. Any questions about those? Okay, David, do you want to um, share your piece, the second paragraph here?
Sure, thank you, Director Ebert, and good evening, everyone. Just wanted to share um, a couple of highlights related to how this enrollment downturn may affect our revenue in the current year. If we look at the raw number of uh, eight hundred and thirty-five ADM deficit compared to how we budgeted and apply what the state estimated back in June on an amount of a dollar per ADMW of about eighty-eight hundred dollars. Uh, that's a, that's less revenue of approximately seven million three hundred and fifty thousand coming in than we projected through the budget process. That's just looking at the raw numbers. Where we're at now, uh, at the state level is the Oregon Department of Education has opened up back up the data collection uh, that we completed last December to estimate our ADM numbers for the current year. And so all districts will have the opportunity because there is a trend, a downward trend statewide of enrollment, probably not to the level we're down uh, between, uh, of over six percent. But once this uh, update is completed by all districts, as far as uh, where, what their estimated ADM is for the current year, then the state, uh, the Department of Education will do a recalculation of the state school fund in the, over the next month. And so I'm just going to give a hypothetical example of how that might look. And there's no scientific uh, evidence to these numbers, but if, if the state was down two percent statewide, as far as enrollment's concerned this fall compared to how districts budgeted, that's going to have an um, inverse effect on um, the denominator in the amount per ADMW calculation. So um, we should see a gain in the amount per ADMW. So if, if we're, if we're down um, two percent enrollment statewide, I'm just going to say that what if the eighty-eight hundred dollars per ADMW went up two percent or approximately to nine thousand? We would gain uh, about two million six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So instead of being short seven million three hundred and fifty thousand, it, uh, we would be down four point seven million. So that number sounds a lot better to me than, than seven million plus. But that's just a hypothetical example of how it could shake out. But there's, I'm making it simple. There's a lot of factors to the state school fund and the other dollar amount that they've asked us to update is the property taxes. Because the levies just came out and people will begin receiving their property tax statements at home and start making their payments next month or, or over the next month. And um, I analyzed our property tax levy compared to recent years. And our property tax levy, for the first time in five years, the assessed value went up less than four percent, just over three percent. So that's a, that's a variable. If it, if it's a trend, one of those trends statewide, it could have the inverse effect of that increase in the amount per ADMW and offset some of that increase perhaps. Uh, that's because the property taxes are part of the state school fund formula. So every dollar we receive locally in, in the form of property taxes in our coffers at the county, we receive one less dollar from the state. So uh, if we're receiving if we're receiving um, less in terms of property taxes, it's going to dilute the, the state school fund statewide. If that, again, that, that let, less amount of property taxes than expected um, is a trend statewide. Which we don't know yet, I mentioned it to the Department of Ed last week and they said they hadn't heard that yet. Maybe it's a Tiger Twalton thing, uh, who knows? We'll find out once um, districts begin updating that information and the state or the Department of Ed recalculates the state school fund overall. The other thing, the other area we pay attention to related to property taxes is our local option. And this year, um, the, the amount of the levy uh, went up four point six percent, which is, it's down from recent increases, recent year increases. So uh, we'll probably still receive about the amount we budgeted. I was hoping uh, the increase would be higher and we, we gain, gain some more dollars in our budget that way. But it's, it's probably going to be pretty close to what we budgeted by the time those collections are completed by year end. So that, I wanted to point out that I, I addressed the property tax information that I just shared in the board memo for the, the monthly financial report, and that's on pages fifty-one through fifty-three of the board packet. I would encourage you, when you get the monthly updates related to the finances, I, I would encourage you to read that narrative. That'll give you a good overview and the highlights. And then additionally, the, the particular financial report that I like to look at is on page fifty-eight of the board packet. And that's the general fund financial projection. And I like to look at those projection numbers, those annual projection or annual forecast numbers month to month. Uh, for instance, on the expenditure side, a year, a, a month ago, in last month's financial statement, we projected a hundred and sixty-two point five million in expenditures in the general fund for the year. And our forecasting system updates that projection each month based on what the actual expenditures have been to date, plus it looks back at prior year's projections and trends. So the trends that we've seen in month-to-date since July, are those holding true or are they uh, flipping a little bit? And um, so the number uh, of one hundred and sixty-one point two million in the current month projected for the whole year was actually one hundred and sixty-two point five million last month. So it's trending, that's a good thing, uh, we're. We're, that means there could be additional budget savings that would offset this, this revenue shortfall. So that number will get updated, of course, each month. And the trends that we're using in our assumptions in the forecasting system are pre-COVID because you can throw everything out from a year ago. There were a lot of savings because of of school not being in person and not having transportation and other costs, substitutes, et cetera. So I'm going to stop there and see if there's any questions.
I do have a quick question, or maybe not quick. I guess it depends. There have been previous conversations about extending the extended ADMW and holding schools or holding districts harmless in terms of.
Director Bowman, if he's speaking.
I am speaking. Can you hear me now? No, nothing. Testing, testing. Let us know if you can hear us, Director Moore.
No sound coming from the board room.
Uh oh, you could hear us before. That's interesting. Can you type in the chat and just say?
Hopefully you guys heard me.
Yeah, we could hear you.
I was hearing everyone up to the point I started talking.
We're not, we're not muted on our end, Thor. Okay. So.
If there, if you could put your question in the chat, maybe I can address it.
Like it's, it would be long-winded to put in the chat one second. Or maybe we could call him on his cellphone as a quick stopgap potentially. Testing, testing. I think Sue's, yeah. Cause we've got five minutes left in the work session, so this will be a quick stopgap. Director Moore, we have you on speakerphone. So we're, we're getting creative here. So my, my question is, there have been previous conversations about extending the extended ADMW and holding districts harmless for pandemic downturn in enrollment. Is that proposal dead as far as you know, or is there still a possibility that the ODE or the Governor's Office or the legislature perhaps could extend the extended ADMW?
Yes, Chair Bowman, great question. I think Michael Wiltfong from the ODE oversees the state school fund. He's been pretty consistent in his message, asking us to stay patient and make sure all districts get their numbers updated and then they'll do a recalc at that point, point and determine where where the state school fund is overall and then maybe determine at that time if a recommendation needs to be made, that's something and all, and alternate way of calculating in the current year needs to be considered. Like you said, extending the extended ADMW one more year. So stay tuned on that.
I wonder if that is something we might want to begin talking to legislators about for some potential nudging to the department. But any, any, thank you for the information. Other questions?
I would just say with similar, oh, oh, right. Okay. Yeah, I would just say that, that what, what you're talking about in terms of the extended ADMW is similar to this notion of a pandemic relief, right? That I think we've been talking a little bit about.
So everybody's, for everybody's interest, normally you, you compare the ADMW of your current year and the immediate prior year. And so that wouldn't do us much good in, in the current year because our ADMW is going to be close to the same in, in both years. But there's been talk of it going back a third year. And that's what Director Bowman's alluding to and questioning. And that would be, that would be great for us, but it sounds like there's lots of hoops. Chair Bowman mentioned the legislature, Michael Wiltfong, the coordinator of the state school fund. He has also said along the, the way that likely any change or shift like that would require legislative action.
Okay, we have two more minutes left. Any questions for either Director Moore, Director Ebert, or Board members? Any closing thoughts from either director?
Yeah, the only thing I would say, we'll try to give updates each either if, if need, something needs to be communicated through the weekly board updates, if not on the monthly financial report to the board.
That would be great. Thank you. Okay. Well, with that, thank you, Director Moore, for being creative with technology. And I will adjourn the work session at 5:59 and we will reconvene in thirty-one minutes. Thanks, everyone.